Good morning, everyone. It is nine o'clock on Tuesday, February 8. So I will call the meeting to order and the first item of business, we could have our clerk Mallory, if you could just do a quick roll call. Thank you.
Counselor Clark?
Present.
Counselor Donaldson?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
Present.
Counselor McKechnie? Oh, are you on mute?
Present.
Perfect. Counselor Smith?
President.
Counselor Wood Roberts?
Present.
And Mayor Roberts?
Present.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you for that. Excuse me, tickle. Next item is to adopt our agenda. So if I could have a mover in a second or to adopt our agenda today, Counselor Wood Roberts, and seconded by Counselor McKechnie. It resolved that the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting held on February 8, 2022 be approved as presented. All in favor? And that carries. Next, I will ask if there's any disclosure of pecuniary interest or general nature thereof. And seeing none, we'll move on to adopt the minutes from our committee, the whole meeting on December 7. If I could have a mover and a second for that, please. Counselor Smith and Counselor Clark. Excuse me. It resolved that the December 7, 2021 Committee of the Whole minutes be approved as circulated. All in favor? Okay, and that's carried. And first up today, we are going to bring Mike Rutter, the C O from the County of Halliburton into our meeting to discuss the community safety and well-being plan that's been worked on for quite some time at the county. And I will let Mike, when I see him, take it away. Good morning, Mike.
Morning. How are you today?
Great, great. So I'm just going to turn the floor over to you and there you go.
Hey, thank you very much, Mayor Roberts, members of council. It's my pleasure to be here today to talk about the community safety and well-being plan that has been developed for the County of Halliburton. I won't go through a lot of detail because I know that a number of you attended the special council meeting last week, and you've all seen the materials and the draft plan. But I will go over at a high level, the process we followed and and sort of emphasize the three things that we're asking for in terms of recommendations. So the work really began in earnest in April of 2021, where the steering committee began to meet. The steering committee was made up of the heads of council, all of the mayors and the warden and the O P P detachment commander. And I supported that process. The first order of business was really to decide on the on the structure of the detachment board. And so the committee decided to, on a seven-member board, five members would be the heads of council and one provincial appointee and one community appointee done by but well, one community appointee. And so we are asking that that be that decision be ratified. The early on in the process, we always felt that an advisory table would be an outcome of the community safety and well-being plan, but we our consultants Strategy Corp. really recommended that they be engaged very early on in the process. And so they had representation from they were appointed as individuals, but they they represent a number of organizations like Human Services with the City of Cortha Lakes, Triple H S, Point in Time, the Canadian Mental Health Association. We had the high school principal, a health promoter from the the health unit, and of course, law enforcement was represented as well. Through the process, they engaged with a number of service providers, about 30 in total. And we really have been blessed in Halliburton County to have a very engaged and collaborative service provider network that have been meeting for many years. The county hasn't necessarily been connected to those meetings. I think even some of the local municipalities were, but the county wasn't. So it was really a great opportunity to get to know them and and start to work with them. And we did some community survey work. We had over 100 responses to the survey, which, you know, I know it's a big community and that's not a large number, but it it our consultants were very confident that it was a representative sample. And and then we had a couple of public meetings as well. The the data, it was very clear early on in the process that data was a real challenge for us. We there wasn't really a single source. And so they did gather data from Stats Can from the city of Cortha Lakes, who have a data coordinator, our health unit, the O P P, U-Links and others. So but I would say that the data moving forward will really be an area of focus for us. We really need to to have better information in order to make better decisions. The the goal of the of the community safety and well-being plan is really to move from a reactive state to becoming more proactive, to make our community safer. And and so I think we all know that that if we get to an incident response, that's by far the most expensive in terms of financial, but also on the human cost and the 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 loss of property. So so we want to become more proactive so that we can actually mitigate those risks, move to risk intervention, and then proactively reducing those identified risks and ultimately addressing underlying causes of social issues through upstream approaches to promote and maintain individual and community wellness. So it really is about becoming more proactive in addressing these issues and less reactive. The the plan is really a current state assessment of the community. And I think when you go through this process, it really is important to remember that it's a living, breathing document that will evolve over time. And I think a number of the goals and objectives may actually be tweaked as the advisory table continues to meet. And and we really start to work with people who have who have on the street experience in Halliburton. So I the work is far from done. We we developed goals in four major categories, housing and homelessness, poverty, employment, mental health, and substance abuse and addictions, and then healthcare system access. And and there will be, the proposal is that moving forward, there will be subcommittees of the advisory table working on all of those issues and the and the goals that are outlined in each one. The the county council has actually set aside some money in the in the draft budget that they they're considering to hire a coordinator for this to to maintain the the community safety and well-being plan to to really work with those other agencies to ensure that there's lots of collaboration going on and a lot of communication. I think that's there are often there are often solutions out there and and people working really hard to implement them, but but our residents don't know about them. They don't know how to access them. And I think we saw that over and over, or we heard that over and over again as we as we went through the process. So we're hoping that the advisory table will stay engaged and that the coordinator role will be implemented to make sure that this doesn't become a document that just sits on the shelf, that it actually results in some some really concrete solutions and and a better community at the end of it all. The the other thing I, you know, I think I would say is sometimes when you go through these processes where you're identifying risks and you're identifying challenges, it's you lose sight of the fact that we live in an incredible community. And, you know, I I I'm always amazed when I speak to people who've chosen this this community to be their home and the reasons they do it. And I guess I would just say that while this identifies some challenges there, we also heard over and over again, what a wonderful community and welcoming community it is. And I I I think it's important to remember that as even as we consider adopting the plan. So the the next two things we're looking for is for you to adopt the plan and then and to ask or delegate the responsibility for the ongoing implementation and maintenance of the plan to the County of Halliburton.
Okay, well, thank you, Mike, so much for that presentation or just, you know, overall discussion on that. And I'm just going to backtrack a little bit before I open it up to the floor for questions is DICER Councilors will remember, I used to sit on CPAC, which is the Community Pacing Advisory Committee, and that's what we were able to do. They, we were told by the province that we needed to have a community safety and well-being plan. Every municipality had to have one. And early on, we Counselor Moffett, Mayor Moffett at Algonquin Highlands, she she was the head of CPAC, and she said, well, this is something we're not going to do for individual plans because we all have, we have one high school here, we have one health services. So right away, we knew that this would be something that should live at the county. So I just wanted to sort of backtrack. This wasn't something that we just decided we should have a community safety and well-being plan. The province said you must. And there was lots of extensions and actually, we're really well on on track. There's lots of municipalities that are still quite behind. So we're well on our way to having this plan. So anyway, I'll open it up to the floor for questions from counselors or comments. Counselor Clark, go ahead.
Mike, thank you for that. The 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 planning aspect of this across the county is so important, but often a lot of these groups work in silos and and this is quite apparent issues such as, you know, housing or or food security cross multiple, you know, multiple areas of support and need. Going back probably about 20 years from this with Rotary and Arroyo, we used to have a monthly meeting of all the local service groups. And, you know, the the town, the town was represented, but it was mostly just an update on what different ones were doing and able to coordinate. So, you know, so we weren't duplicating effort or that we had an idea to kind of work what new challenges or whatever were there. So what I guess my my point is, if you do have the opportunity to put a coordinator in place for this, that perhaps, you know, they can take a lead role in terms of facilitating the, you know, the communication between these different groups. And, you know, and connecting actually, you know, with Fleming and Trent as well in terms of using some of their resources to to do the data collection you're talking about on the ground, you know, what things really lights up. So kudos to the county for doing this. I think this is where it belongs at the county, since we see people cross. You know, you look at 21, County Row 21 in the morning, the number of people coming here from Mendon to work in Halliburton or Halliburton going to Mendon. It's not centered in any one township. It's across, it's across the four townships. And we need, we need this strategically at the county level. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other comments or questions, Counselor Smith?
Thank you. Thanks, Mike. And and I just highlight one opportunity, I think. I referenced this last week at the county meeting. Others, as is pointed out in the report, there's a tremendous sense of engagement in our community by almost everyone that lives here, whether they live here on a permanent basis or a seasonal basis. And and so, you know, with the with the plan or the program going forward, it would really encourage you to do whatever is possible to make individuals aware of how they can make a difference, you know, particularly seasonal residents that may not belong to an organization here like Rotary or Lions or whatever. But they come to the community often for weekends and summer breaks and so forth. And and they'd like to help out, and they often are very generous to local charities and so forth. But, you know, with this plan, if you can identify other ways that people can make a difference to the community beyond simply writing a check to, you know, search or play chess, whatever it is, I think that would really you know, that's the potential and the and the power that people have to contribute so much. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Smith. That's a great point. Yeah, Mike, did you want to speak to that?
No, I just say both of the Counselor Clark and Smith's points are great.
Really good. Yeah. Thank you. We did have a resolution included in our package. So if there's no further questions or comments, I will look for a mover in a second. Deputy Mayor Kennedy and Counselor Clark. It resolved that the committee of the whole receives for information the January 26, 2022 county council staff report on the community safety and well-being plan approval process and further that the committee recommends that DICER at all council endorse and approve a seven-member detachment board concept. And further that the committee recommends that DICER at all council approve the draft community safety and well-being plan as written. And further that the committee recommends that DICER at all council delegate the authority for the implementation and ongoing administration of the community safety and well-being plan to the County of Halliburton. All in favor? Okay, and that passes. Thank you so much, Mike, for coming to our council today and explaining that. Much appreciated. Okay, so now we're going to move on to our reports. And our first report up is fire. Now, Mike Giles is not able to be with us today. I think he was kept rather busy over the weekend and yesterday. So there is, if the report is in there, if there's any questions to bring forward, we can pass them through to Tamara. Any questions on fire? Nope. Okay, other than calls are up. Okay, mover, seconder to receive, please. Counselor Wood Roberts, Counselor McKechnie. Here's all the committee of the whole acknowledges received the fire department report for January 2022. All in favor? Okay, carried. Okay, I've got a few things in Public Works. Excuse me, I've got a tickle today. It's not anything else. It's just dry. I need, I need a, I need a Werther's. I'm going to turn my mic off and turn the winter operations update over to Rob. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick update on our winter operations for the month of January. Although the the winter season in the end of 2021 started out much like the the year before, January was very much heavier than this time last year. So it's just for information, I am going to provide monthly updates on this. It is a big ticket item as far as our budget goes. And I just want to be cognizant of it as we go through the budget process.
Any questions for Rob? Counselor Smith, go ahead.
Thanks. I have a question. I just want to make a quick comment to Rob and Tamara can share it with the other staff. But it's interesting, and Mike Rutter just made the comment that, you know, better information and data supports better decision-making. And and I was really impressed, pleased with all of the data, you know, the measurements, the specific numbers and so forth that are part of the reporting process this month. And it seemed like each area, each department was making a stronger effort to start tracking data and presenting metrics and so forth. And I think that's fantastic. And and as Mike said, it should enable better decision-making going forward. So well done to everyone. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Smith. I think a lot of times the data, certainly with Public Works and roads, there's there's so much data, we could be bogged down in data. It's it is there. They're keeping track. Maybe it's just a matter of, you know, how much gets communicated back to council. But, no, I think, you know, we we had no snow for all of December and then a lot of snow in January. So it's, you know, it's hard for any organization to go from not busy to when's my road getting done? And we achieved our level of service, if not greater than every single snowfall. So while some people get frustrated because my road didn't get plowed, it's certainly definitely meeting our targets and then some. So I don't know, Rob, if you wanted to comment on that. And then Counselor Clark.
No, you you hit the nail on the head. With the intent of providing some of this information, certainly in the graph view, is it it kind of narrows in on when we got hit the hardest and very much that that storm in the middle of January is kind of what put us over the top for January. So you know, I'm sure we've said it in years past, but sometimes it only takes one event to blow the winter maintenance budget. So.
You bet. Counselor Clark, next.
Yeah, just just a little point of clarification, Rob. The 40% increase, that's based on the on the number of days that you got your teams out there, your crews out there? Is that is that the way it's, is that the way it's evaluated?
No, this is based on the number of kilometers that we serviced, either with the plow or with the spreader. So year over year, we're up 40%.
Okay.
So yeah, that that can correlate to how many times we send them out, but not every road gets serviced at the same time, certainly on the weekends.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks for that. So I'll have a mover, seconder to receive this first report. Counselor Wood Roberts and Counselor Smith. It resolved that the committee of the whole receives and acknowledges this report about winter operations is information. All in favor? Okay, carried. And Patty's Bay Bridge damage.
Yes, thank you. So it was brought to our attention in October through Counselor Smith about some concerns on the wearing surface on Patty's Bay Bridge. You may recall that bridge was recently rehabbed in 2017. So I was quite surprised to see it in the shape it was, quite honestly. So we did engage an engineer. It was the same firm that did the contract administration on the bridge. He said it does not make it less safe. It is the wearing surface. It's designed to wear like that. He was a little concerned that it was wearing so quickly. He did tell me. So we would expect to see that after, you know, maybe seven or eight years, but certainly not after four. So basically, all that does for us from the operational side is we would have to source some timbers, like timbers that are on there, keep them in stock and just replace deck boards as we need to. So that's something I can hopefully do this year if we can source some materials, and it's something that we can absorb into the maintenance budget.
Okay, thanks. Not great news. Is it the type of traffic? Is the is it certain particular vehicles that create more wear than we anticipated or?
Part of it is snowplow damage, not all of it, because where it is gouging doesn't make sense. The snowplow wouldn't hit it in that area. But I believe and I believe the consultant would agree with me that it's the gravel approaches on either side. So as people approach, some of the stones actually get on there and they just get pounded in with tire traffic.
That's that seems to be, make a bit of sense. Counselor Smith, you look like you had a question?
No, well, that's a good anticipation. Thank you. I had not a question, just a comment or I'm at a thanks to to Rob for for pursuing this with the, you know, not only his personal onsite visit, but getting the engineering firm, the people had contacted me, were concerned about safety, you know, when you see the boards that are the surface you drive on and you see holes in them that, you know, these people are appropriately alarmed. And and so it's great for everyone to to know that, you know, an expert of Rob's nature, but also we brought in engineers and they've looked at it, and there is no risk here to the public. And we've got a clear plan of action in terms of being able to swap out old boards and put in new ones as required. So thanks for that, Rob.
Okay, great. So the mover, seconder to receive that report. Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Donaldson. It resolved that the committee receives and acknowledges this report concerning damage to the wearing of surface of Patty's Bay Bridge is information. All in favor? Okay, carried. Next, video surveillance at Harcourt and Halliburton landfills. John.
Morning, everyone. The Halliburton landfill and the Harcourt landfill have been experiencing after-hours illegal trespassing, scavenging, and vandalism. These incidents have been reported to the Ontario Provincial Police. And while the O P P have investigated, they have indicated the need for video surveillance to better assist with identifying the perpetrators. DICER engaged the county's information technology department to see which technology solutions were best applicable at both of those sites. Halliburton landfill has electricity and access to the county's information technology network. So it was recommended a standard video surveillance, video recorder be purchased and installed, similar to what DICER has in place at Headlake Park and Skate Park. Harcourt landfill does not have any electricity nor access to the county's information technology network. So it is recommended a solar-powered trail camera with S D card and cellular capabilities be purchased and installed. It can be configured that it would only record motion as it's being detected, thereby reducing the amount of data being captured. Because video surveillance data would be stored on the S D card at Harcourt landfill, our video surveillance policy cannot be fully complied with as the data retention period would be longer than seven days. So an exemption or exception to the policy, we require to install that type of camera at Harcourt landfill.
Seems to be the way of the world. As soon as there's an incident, then the police say, do you have video surveillance? It seems like, you know, that's what we have to do to protect our assets. And it's you just have to almost shake your head, what's the world coming to when people are breaking, sorry, breaking into our landfills? It's something could be that valuable. But anyway, I guess that's what we have to do. It looks like it was already included in the budget or you had an amount in. So.
We'd allocated the money in the budget for 2022, so it is, it is there for us to make the purchase of this technology and the data plans.
Okay. And with the, each time with, when we've done video surveillance, we had to do some kind of public survey and we had, like, there's a, there's a legal expectation or whatever that you have to go through or procedure that you have to go through. So do we have to do that thing as well?
We'll be following the the county's kind of lead on this in terms of signage, the surveying. I suspect if we need to do surveying, we can, but it's I because it's on private property and really trying to get things after hours, I don't think it'll be a problem in terms of the results.
Okay, any further questions on this for John? John, Counselor Smith?
Thank you. John, will we only do this recording in the after-hours period? So will we be able to assure people that, you know, what they're doing at the dump during regular hours is not being video recorded?
I would need to speak to the county's I T department if that capability is possible. In some situations, having video recording when there's people on site has been, would have been beneficial to maybe help de-escalate situations with customers. But again, it's something I can speak to the county's I T department about what that capability is available.
Okay, I just think it's, we make that clear in one way or another. But you know, it's not just an after-hours problem, maybe, to address. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. I think would would, I'm going to look at the rest of counselor, counsel rather, and I see you, Counselor Donaldson, have your hand, but would it not be the preference of council to have it 24/7 recording? If that's possible, if that meets the I T policy and whatever we have to do there, I think that would be the preference because there's other incidents there as well. Okay, Counselor Donaldson?
Yeah, I just wanted to check to confirm that the S D card in the one in Harcourt, is it only, that camera only on at night so that it doesn't, because it is solar, so it's it's a limited amount of power. So is it only on at night or is it during the day too? So somebody's going to have to be checking that like on a I don't know whether, how long the S D card would last for people coming in.
Yeah, the expectation, I think, at Harcourt would be that, also where it's going to like a camera to access. But the plan would be to have it operating essentially 24 hours a day, only because the site, for example, is mainly maybe not open on a on a Wednesday in the daytime, in the wintertime. So there's still power to to see what's happening there. So I I suspect the 24-hour surveillance detecting motion only is the best option at Harcourt landfill?
Yeah, because that's one's different because it's motion detected. It should, you can't, I don't think you can set on the time if there's a, if it sees something, it starts recording. Rob?
I would expect to, we'd have to confirm this John, through you, is if it has a Wi-Fi connection, you should be able to check the status of that daily or, you know, send alerts or something to that effect if it's low on voltage. So it may not be a case where you actually have to climb up there and check it. It should be able to tell you. Yeah.
Okay, well, it looks like it's a goal. I'll look for a mover in a second or to approve this. Counselor Wood Roberts and Counselor Clark. It resolved that the committee of the whole recommends council approve the purchase and use of video surveillance cameras at the Halliburton landfill and Harcourt landfill. And that the committee of the whole recommends council approve exceptions to DICER's video surveillance policy to permit data retention longer than seven days for the surveillance camera to be installed at Harcourt landfill. All in favor? Okay, so that's carried. Next, we have you also, John, the Waste Management summary.
Yes, so this information. Yes, so this informational report kind of summarizes our activities in 2021 from a waste management perspective. As committee is aware, we had a lot of changes happening last year. And we had the new waste management bylaw that came into place on May 1. It was the first substantive revision to the bylaw since 2006. We had new waste disposal fees that were introduced. The last fees had been updated in 2018. New hours of operation had started. They were really the first changes to landfill hours in 14 years. West Guilford landfill ceased landfilling garbage on site on January 31. So as of now, as of then, Halliburton, Kinesis Lake and West Guilford landfills are hauling out garbage for disposal and Harcourt and West Bay are still bearing garbage on site. With an estimation of about 10 years of landfill capacity remaining on those sites. We issued a number of tenders and requests for proposals, including for the collection and processing of garbage recycling and construction demolition waste. The waste composition study and the collaborative RFP with the other municipalities for household hazardous waste. In 2021, we sold more backyard composters and digesters than we did the year previous. We partnered with U-Links and Fleming College on the Illegal Dumping Research Project. We did a lot of promotion education using social media, print advertising, public service announcements, the waste sorting guide. In the Rapier's tax bill in June 2021. We implemented the Waste Wizard web app and the Halliburton County Waste Wizard mobile app. We DICER was recognized with a number of awards for its promotion and education efforts. In this report, there's also a summary of the vehicle counts. So in 2021, DICER's five waste management sites recorded. 203,937 vehicles compared to 198,635 vehicles in 2020. Which represents a 3% increase in vehicle traffic. In 2021, DICER hauled 7,204 metric tons of waste, which includes recycling, household garbage, household hazardous waste, etc. Compared to 7,213 metric tons in 2020. So this represents a 0.16% decrease in metrics tons managed. There was a 5% decrease in blue box materials hauled, a 5% decrease in construction demolition waste hauled, but a 39% increase in the amount of garbage haul. This increase in garbage could maybe be partially attributed to West Guilford landfill ceasing to landfill garbage on July 31. And the starting of transferring the garbage out. And then in 2021, DICER earned 876,602 dollars in waste management revenue. And incurred 2,239,731,000 in waste management expenses. And we have a kind of a more of a breakout attached to this report. And then in terms of plan and policies, obviously, we have the county's corporate chi corporate climate change mitigation plan. The Waste Management Short Term Review, the DICER Service Delivery Review, the Halliburton Municipality Service Delivery Review. All that have waste management initiatives that we've been working on either fulfilling or or have accomplished over the past year and a bit. And that is that's that report.
That is that report. So I believe that was what Counselor Smith was referring to, not only with Rob's report, but your report. This is really, this is actually one I, you know, you almost want to print and have at hand. To say, first of all, how how far we've come, waste management isn't is is a. Huge service that we offer or we have to provide. I don't, you know, it sounds like we have, we choose to, we must provide that for our residents. But it is complicated. It is expensive. It is highly regulated. And so all this information here is one of those things that, you know, when we're going out to, you're going to a cottage association meeting or just having a conversation with people like. Yeah, this is this is a good one, John. So thank you so much to have. So first I'll go to Counselor McKechnie for a comment or question.
Yeah, John, I was just wondering, and you probably don't have this number on your top of your head, but I wonder how many trucks that is down to the Chatham area.
Um, I don't have that number at the top of my head. I do track that so I can I can tell you how many trucks are hauled from us to our. To our transfer station that we use. And then from there, they're using transport trucks to bring the material to the to the landfill in the Chatham area. So there's. I I could get I could get it the kind of numbers of individual vehicles that we're pulling out. I'd have to be able to report back to that. Can you know, I have members of of committee later on with that number if you'd like.
Yeah, that'd be great. I yeah, I like to signal how many are going down the 401.
So so Counselor McKechnie, they go from here to a depot for collection to then go in in more bulk. So. Right. Know exactly how many go down the 401, but you definitely will know how many. Vehicle trips from our landfills to to the depot.
Yeah.
Further comments or questions? Counselor Smith, go ahead.
Thank you. John, does it make any difference? In terms of cost to us as to where people take their waste? In other words, the Kinesis landfill versus West Guilford or Halliburton, whatever?
Um, not in terms of hauling materials out. It's kind of the same fee. If you're using a site that is busier, it's. You just have more that the cost is distributed over more vehicles. So a site that has a higher vehicle count would probably be considered more cost efficient than a site that has fewer vehicle counts.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Other, you know, in the in the financial report here, the. The wages benefits between 2020 and 2021 are are down by about $50,000. How did you achieve that sort of saving?
So in 2020, which is when. That's what I started. I only started in June. So there was myself and the landfill manager, Mark Brahm, who was there until October. So there was a bit of overlap of duplicates of two staff people for 2020, which is I think we had see the the cost variation coming into 2021.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, like I say, this is a this is one of those good reports that may want to go reference back to now and again. So I'll look for a mover in a second or two received if I could. And I saw Deputy Mayor Kennedy and Counselor McKechnie. You resolved that the committee of the whole received the 2021 Waste Management Annual Summary for Information. All in favor? That's carried. And. More on waste, waste composition study.
Um, I'm just going to share my screen here. For this presentation, this this presentation is included in the committee package, but I thought it'd be as interesting so you can all see the numbers at one time.
Thank you.
So the waste composition study, the purpose of conducting this is to understand what's appearing in household garbage and recycling, including the amounts of food waste. Acceptable recycling found in the garbage and contamination in recycling. This then helps us develop programs, policies, procedures to change behaviors, capture more recycling, decrease contamination and divert more materials from disposal. The waste composition is identified in the Corporate Climate Change Mitigation Plan as an activity that should be undertaken. I count DICER council approved conducting the study in September of 2021. We issued a request for proposals and awarded that in fall of 2021. It was awarded to AET Group, which has a long history of doing waste composition studies across Ontario with municipalities small and large. And DICER funded this initiative through the Ontario Municipal Modernization Program. So we conducted this audit in winter 2022 in January. 65 residential properties representing 609 waste generation days were included. The study included kind of a questionnaire and then actual waste sorting of both garbage and recycling. This is an example of one of the AT staff people conducting the questionnaire to help identify that this person was dropping off residential materials. And some of the other questions as part of that survey. In the questionnaire, we learned that 38.46% of households were dropping off seven days worth of waste. Interestingly, 26.15% of of people were dropping off 14 days, so two weeks, two weeks worth of material. And it was actually almost 8% were dropping off only three days worth of material. So I think that maybe speaks to why our. Vehicle counts are so high. People are coming to the sites three to three time every three days or so. Interestingly, 98.44% of households were dropping off waste from a single household, which is what we kind of anticipated we would see. 83.66% of households were using clear bags for garbage, which has been our policy for many, many years here in DICER. 76% of households had loose paper recycling, so the material was unbagged. However, 68.42% had bagged containers. So just kind of interesting how people bring their materials to our site. 32.31% of households self identified as composting at home, which is kind of an interesting number. Also, just some observations, a few households had completely unsorted materials. And they actually identified they preferred to sort their garbage recycling onsite as opposed to at home. Which actually then ends up taking up time at the site to be sorting all the materials when you arrive. Anecdotally, and maybe not surprisingly, animals were identified as the biggest barrier to backyard composting. And a few households self identified a preference to drop off food waste in a separate bin for composting at one of our sites. This is an example of this AET staff doing the waste audit. So this is when they're actually opening bags of material to see what is being thrown out. And they're going to be weighing it. You can see on the table, there's actually some unopened bags of brown sugar, unopened Crisco. This was a lot of food waste totally unopened that had been thrown out. They were actually sorting into approximately 130 categories and subcategories. So this is just kind of a summary of what those categories broke out into. What we learned in this initial waste composition study was that within our containers recycling. 4.66% was actually paper material. So in the wrong recycling stream. 1.50% was newspaper, newsprint and 0.71% was corrugated cardboard. So the thick kind of wavy cardboard. Interesting to see that we were having these kind of paper products appearing within our containers recycling. 25.98% in our containers recycling was actually garbage material that should not be there. 9.775% was nonacceptable plastics, particularly film, large pails. There was 5.16% of other waste, including clothes hangers, wood, meat pads, etc. And then 5.70 was actually food waste or an organic. So people perhaps throwing out. I'm make just using an example here, but maybe throwing out meat that was still in the meat tray and putting it directly. Into the recycling for containers. Obviously, we don't want that garbage appearing in our recycling for containers. The good news is 69.336% of the material within our recycling for containers was actually supposed to be there. So that's that's a good number, but it gives us some information about how we could maybe improve our container recycling. Within our paper recycling, 5.22% is material that should be in our container stream. 1.73% was glass and 1.64% was gable top in a separate carton. So you so your milk cartons, your juice boxes. That's an understandable confusion. So that helps us again know how we can maybe promote these this sorting better. Within our paper recycling, 9.35% is garbage. 1.63% is textiles. So interesting, people are making a correlation that textiles would go into papers, which they should not. And 1.48% was other waste such as furnace filters, cigarette butts. And 1.12% was leftover meat and fish. Not surprisingly, 85.42% is paper products and paper packaging that is accepted in our paper recycling stream. That's a really good news story. Most people are recycling their papers correctly. In the garbage, we found that 5.85% of it is recycling that should be in our container stream. So styrofoam. And aluminum foil and trays. 4.13% is recycling papers. So box board, like your cereal boxes, molded paper, corrugated cardboard. So again, interesting that corrugated cardboard is kind of appearing all over the place when it should be going into our paper recycling. 90.02% was actual garbage. The largest percentage of that was 47.71% being food waste, organics, yard waste. Pet waste was quite high. Pet waste is heavy, so that's not too surprising. And again, 2.61% was textiles appearing in the garbage. Now, while textiles appearing in the garbage has the correct place for it to be, there are other options out there. Obviously reuse. At our at the Lillian's Four Seas or Thrift Warehouse, for example, would be other options for managing those items. Just to break out the food waste, 12.53% is leftover food. 5.67 is untouched food. So food that had been totally like uneaten, unconsumed, just thrown away. 17% was unavoidable food waste and 11% was tissue or paper towel. So just this helps us inform the food weight, food waste reduction plan that we're working on with Fleming College, identifying. How much leftover and untouched food is appearing in the garbage that could be reduced. And it informs potential food waste composting down the road. Not surprisingly, in January, there was not a lot of yard waste or grass clippings in the garbage. And this obviously would change as we come into the spring, summer and fall. The overall findings, if you were to extrapolate the data from from this audit. Each household would have 641 kilograms of total garbage and recycling per year. A waste diversion rate of 29.16%. So we're diverting 29.16% of waste away from landfill by recycling. And we're capturing 82% of all eligible recycling materials in our recycling stream. Glass is the most properly captured material and plastics is the least. Properly captured material and plastics is a confusing item for for many people. So that's not too surprising. In terms of recommendations and next steps, recommendations is promotion and education. So continuing to promote proper recycling, sorting through print advertising, site signage, tax bill inserts, social media. Enforcements, so potentially inspecting vehicles for use of clear bags and rigorously applying the $2 fee. Inspecting recycling materials and rejecting contaminated bags. And then obviously food waste organics, continue promoting backyard composters and digesters. We have the upcoming Food Cycler Pilot Project as well that will start. Educate residents about food waste reduction, which will happen as part of that study we're doing with U-Links and Fleming College. And explore the implementation of a source separated organics program. And next steps, we will have a waste audits coming up in the spring, summer and fall of this year. The rationale obviously is an influx in seasonal and short term renters that will be here. Changes in seasonal behavior with people barbecuing, people gardening, that changes the type of waste. People dispose of, and it also helps us gauge the success of our promotion, education and enforcement efforts. If we can identify a few items that we need to move from the garbage into recycling or recycling into a different recycling stream. Now we will be able to gauge off of this benchmark if we're if we're meeting those goals of of better better recycling and better sorting. So that was our first waste composition study here in DICER.
Okay, and thanks for sharing your screen to walk us through the through that. And that's a great presentation. I'm I know there'll be lots of questions. So if it's okay, I'm going to kick it off with one is for some reason I thought we were going to do 100 households. So I was just wondering, is 65 households enough of a sample to really get? What's happening in in terms of what how people are going to the landfill, recycling, garbage, etc. 65 enough?
Yeah, for this initial one, they felt 65 was enough. It was, we were also up against, it was that week of like minus 30. So it was a slower day at the landfill when we were gathering material. The ultimate goal really is 700 generation days because then they can do more division into what a week's worth is, what an individual day's worth is. In consultation with the AET for the spring audit, they're definitely going to be hitting that 700 generation day, which in theory would be 100 homes. It may be slightly less. Depending if people change the frequency that they visit the sites in the winter versus springtime. So that's going to be another learning for us. Do people change how often they come as the weather changes?
Right, yeah, not everybody has, you know, things garbage can get stinky or whatever. So in the summertime. And areas to keep it. So and the other thing is just just one more and then I'll sorry, open it up is at the very beginning of the slide deck, when you talk about the questionnaire, 83% of the households are using clear bags. When you talk about the questionnaire, eighty three percent of the households are using clear bags. How come it's not like ninety eight percent?
That's a good question. Um, considering with this policy has been in place for a long time. Um, I think this maybe speaks to people uh just having had behaviors where they, they hadn't been inspected the bags. Um, and so I think this speaks to enforcement for our landfill attendants, which I'll be working with them on doing more enforcement. It could also be. Um, people are comfortable paying a two dollar fee for dropping off a black bag. Um, in this situation, because you were kind of directing people from the questionnaire area to our drop off site, the landfill attendants weren't really inspecting. Those bags ahead of time to, to charge fees, but um I was, I was surprised that that number was. Only at eighty three percent like you, like you mentioned. So that's something for the landfill attendants, myself, to kind of work on and figure out some solutions to. To get that percentage uh much higher.
That, that's good. And I appreciate that because that has been around, you know, for, for a long, long time and it does need to be enforced. And I bet. As soon as somebody said to start paying two dollars, even though it's only two dollars, they, they wouldn't be buying those type of bags anymore. And so, um, good, good. That's the target. Okay, let's uh see what other questions. Uh, Councilor Clark up first.
Um, just to, to follow through on that point, Madam Mayor, um. John, it may be interesting in, in the summer to see if there's more of the dark bags appearing in the winter months. And, and the reason I'm saying that is I think a lot of people, if they. Got a um garbage bags with their pr- or rather promises in the city. They'll just bring a few bags along and, and use those as opposed to, you know, checking our bylaws and, and do plastic. So. It may be an interesting stat to, to see if there is any kind of a seasonal, um, you know, pattern there. So, thanks.
John, did you wanna comment to that or just?
I was, I was gonna agree fully. And I think the, the beauty of this waste composition study is it gives us a benchmark. Right? We've got a metric now that we can measure back to as we go through the waste composition studies for the remainder of the year.
Okay, um Deputy Mayor Kennedy and then Counselor Smith was next.
Thanks, John. Excellent report. Um, couple of things stick out. I think we're doing a heck of a good job, actually. When you see seventy percent acceptable containers, eighty five percent paper, ninety percent garbage. Uh, given the confusion between people who are seasonal residents and what we do here with our recycling. I know I fight with my daughter all the time, but when she asks me to pick up her recyclable, you gotta everything all in one bag. And that's what they do in the city. So I'm wondering if that's part of it. And uh, um, the, the enforcement, I, I, I don't know what you're gonna do with the two dollars a bag, but. I, I'd rather see some more educate. Uh, I know education is a tired term. But uh, maybe just pointing out next time, bring a clear bag rather than hitting their taxpayers with another, like a fine or whatever you got uh coming up. Um, I don't know. I think it's a great way to start and I look forward to seeing the difference between short term rentals. Uh, as they proliferate during the summer as opposed to winter. But excellent job. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Smith.
And uh, you know, I'd echo uh Deputy Mayor's comments with respect to uh, you know, great job and report before John. A couple of areas of questions, maybe first to follow up uh to the mayor's uh questions about the number of households. Um, so I understand your logic for the uh, uh, for the why it was only sixty five days, but are we getting? The value that we're paying A E T for? Uh, and I thought, again, the mayor, that our R F P was pretty clear. We wanted a hundred households. If they only did sixty five, well then, do we only pay them two thirds of the uh, of the contract amount?
Um, I can speak to A E T about that. I know they would definitely, they, they've really enjoyed working here. So I suspect even in the spring, maybe they go above the. The, the one hundred to make up the difference. Um, but let, I, I can speak to the vendor to see what options are available to us.
All right. I just think, you know, in, in terms of uh managing vendors, uh, you only do two thirds of the job, uh, you know, uh. Why would you get the full uh, full pay? Um, the um, the, the aspect of this that uh, when I was looking through the uh report, uh, I was uh. Uh, shocked frankly, that uh forty seven percent of our garbage is organic waste. Um, and um, and so to me, that um, you know, reinforces the uh. The importance of finding a way of allowing uh our, our residents, our property owners. To uh, to do something with organic waste. We can't compost it themselves. Uh, and so, you know, uh, getting uh, you know, our E C A change or whatever it is that uh could eliminate. Alling that organic waste uh all the way down to Chatham or Wofford or wherever it's going. Uh, is uh, you know, should be something that we attach a, a great deal of importance to. And I saw it on your list there. It was number three in terms of uh investigating. But uh, when it's, when you see a number as big as forty seven percent. Uh, that's uh, that was staggering. Um, and uh, so I, I wanted to highlight that and uh. Um, and I guess the other point is the uh, is again uh referring to Deputy Mayor's comments with his daughter. The importance of standardization. You know, Ontario's been recycling for forty years and it boggles my mind. Uh, that uh, you know, we don't know um as citizens where things go because it seems like every community. Uh, based on their service provider has a little bit of, of variations in terms of the rules. And you saw it in your statistics again with the uh, you know, the gable top uh boxes, the milk cartons and so forth. Um, people are confused because it seems every community has a place for these things to go. And um, and so whatever you can do uh to uh, you know, encourage uh. Uh, the province and other communities. Cause even in Halliburton County, we've got some differences. How do, how do we get uh citizens to uh, to improve their performance? Well, they would point at us first and say. Folks, could you come up with one set of rules? Because no matter where you play a game of golf or a game of hockey or whatever it is, the rules are the same. And uh, and it ought to be the same with uh, with recycling if we really wanna get uh higher compliance. Thank you.
Um, I will, I'll just say for the blue box, there definitely is an effort at the provincial level to standardize the blue box across the province. So as part of the new blue box regulation that will come into effect from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty five. With DICER and the other Halliburton County municipalities transitioning in twenty twenty four. Um, the, the, it, the goal is to standardize the blue box across the entire province. So regardless of where you are, it'll be the same acceptable materials.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, Counselor Donaldson.
Um, have you went into the stores to um, see if they'll provide clear bags? Because I've gone into a few stores and all there is is black bags. And I was kind of shocked that. The consumer doesn't even have the option of getting clear bags in their area. So is it possible that we could go to the, the stores and let them know? That it would be nice to be able to carry clear bags?
Yeah, absolutely. I can use some outreach to the, the grocery stores and hardware stores encouraging the sale of those bags. Uh, sometimes because it comes from a corporate decision somewhere else, it can be challenging, but it's definitely something I could work on for sure.
Okay, thank, thanks for that comment and um response. Thanks, John. Uh, Counselor McCackney, go ahead.
Yeah, John, um, I, I would definitely be interested in knowing uh where, when our garbage is dropped off. How many trucks, say a month, go, go down to Chatham? But, you know, I know all that's not just our garbage. But I'd be curious to know that and figure if you could find that out for me. And it also boggles my mind that, you know, you did a wonderful report there, you know, so much information. But there's not one uh sentence or one word there about incinerating garbage. And to me, I know this is not your responsibility. I'm not blaming you. But to me, I, I just, I can't believe that here it is twenty twenty two and, and we're not talking Ontario, Canada. It's not talking about. Building more incinerators. It, it's, it's got to happen. So that's just my opinion, of course. But um, I, I just don't understand why there isn't. I know the county's doing a um, a, a report on it, which is great. Uh, but I, I sure would like to have some more information on that uh, in, in the next uh. Like the last six months of this, eight, eight months of this term of council. Um, it's like I say, it, it boggles my mind that we don't talk about. Thank you very much.
Okay, so that is just, you know, a, a general we, and, and I think we, you know, we've all been asking John for that information and to see where. If, if it was Peter Bros, the organic waste, but we, anyway, if we have options, but this is a very specific report on. A very specific thing that wa- was done. The, the picture of the uh two employees that work for the company, um. Luckily, the one picture is just showing unused brown sugar and Crisco. Maybe it was outdated. I don't know. But then when you read it, they actually had to go through and. What's in the actual garbage, which is dog poop and food. Partly eaten. I really commend them. I'm sorry, I could not have done that job, mask or no mask. Uh, so that's, that's a probably about the lowest of the. Low, but it's necessary to see what people are doing. And um, I think this is gonna tire in really, really well with the uh food recycler. Wherever it is, that's what it's called. The, you know, the countertop one that we can, because there are a lot of people, myself included. That uh are one of those that, that feel that animals in the proximity to where I live, uh, it, it's. Not conducive for me to, to have a um. Uh, it's just not my habit, but I'd be glad to put one on my countertop or in the garb- uh garage. And uh, when I'm doing my carrot peelings and potato peelings and all that kind of stuff, I'd, I'd love to be able to reduce my garbage. Um, that way. So I'm looking forward to that program as well. So this is a, a great report. Uh, so I'll just look for a mover second or two. Receive. And Counselor Wood Roberts and Counselor Clark. Here is all that the community, the whole received this report for information about the winter twenty twenty two waste composition study. All in favor? Okay, that's carried. Um, actually, one last comment on that, John, before you go, uh, is. Is, when we're all said and done and we do the full year and we've got a sort of fulsome report on that. Will we be able to be benchmark against what other municipalities have? So like I said, we only had sixty five household in the winter one. But will we be able to see comparables even without actually naming other, the municipalities perhaps, but just. Is DICER here or here? Like.
Yeah, so um, many municipalities do waste composition studies, including through some of the industry funding organizations. Um, so we can definitely look at some comparisons to other municipalities, some with curbside collection, some that are depot only. Just to get a really good sense of where we sit kind of in the spectrum of, of waste diversion practices.
Okay, great. I think that'll help in the education section of it. Uh, Counselor Smith?
All right, I'll call you again. Uh, sorry, uh, it was one other point. I was just looking at my notes here. I, I forgot uh, in talking about organic waste, uh, John, your report. Uh, noted the forty seven percent uh being uh, you know, food waste and uh, and so forth as organics. Um, but you all said separate from that, just over ten percent, I think it was ten point six percent of the waste is uh. Um, what I'll call pet waste. And um, uh, pet waste in, in Toronto anyway, pet waste goes in the green bin. So that's also organic matter. Uh, that uh, you know, that now says fifty seven percent of our garbage. In fact, could go in that organic stream. And uh, that's, that's pretty staggering. Thank you.
Yeah, and Toronto uses anaerobic decomposition, which uh allows them to put pet waste in. If you're doing an open win row. Aerobic compet- decomposition process, you likely would not want to include pet waste. Um, in, in that composting process. So it's kind of a, a give and take of what process you end up using. So part of the, the discovery for us. Um, as we, as we investigate this topic.
Okay, thanks for that. Sorry, I asked questions after. It doesn't change the resolution. We received that. But uh, anyway, it is an interesting topic. And will continue to be so. So thank you, John. Thank you, uh, Rob, for that. And we've already brought Andrea Mueller in for our parks and rec section. How are you, Andrea?
I'm good, thank you.
Good. Okay, so our first report uh is regarding the uh farmer's market. Did you wanna speak to that?
Sure. So um, the farmer's market last year uh set, we, uh, over the past few years have set up, I guess. Both on the Rotary Beach side of the park, um, when we were undergoing some construction on the Headlake sa- side. And then last year, they were back at Headlake Park, um, in the area between the playground and the flower boxes. This year, they've requested permission to be on both sides of the park to keep things spread out and also to stay off the pathway. And the. Years back, they used to be along the pathway that went between the lake and the ban shell. Um, and as we all know, there's lots of ruts and it forms muddy sections and everything. So. They've had a increase in um vendors applying to be a part of the farmer's market, vendors that have uh. You know, food businesses or, or um, that fit within the farmer's market mandates of what type of uh vendors they can have. So they've requested to be on both sides of the park. And I talked to Lauren, who's the market manager about this. We are going to do a site visit. The uh. Installation of the dog park doesn't affect where they would set up. They would set up off the pathway in Rotary Beach, similar to what they did two years ago. Um, just to spread the vendors out to make it so it's not so congested for people attending the farmer's market. Uh, it just helps to keep people spread out and to space. Um, I'm not sure if anyone, if everyone had a chance to get down there last year, but it worked quite well. And if you were to add more vendors into that area, it would become quite a bit more congested. So having them on both sides of the park, it also creates awareness for what's over on the Rotary Beach side. And um, provides more parking opportunities for people. I know. As we all know, on Tuesdays, especially in July and August, it can get really, really busy along Highland Street and in the York Street area. So by having. A, a chance to enter or, or take part in the market on the Rotary Beach side as well, will hopefully encourage people to park. In, on, on the Park Street parking lot too. So that was the thought process there. Um, so, any questions or comments?
Uh, well, I'll open up to the floor. I have one, but I'll hold off. See what other counselors feel about this. Anybody? Okay, Counselor Smith, go ahead.
Yeah, um, just uh, one thing Andrea was, was regarded as you say more uh vendors. Um, we continuing to push um that they give more opportunity to local vendors. Um, you know, it's. Supposed to be our, our local farmer's uh market and uh, you know, there's a lot of people uh there. You, they, they come from afar, the Corthys and so forth and uh. Um, I'd sure hope that if we're gonna have expansion, that the uh, the new people are uh, are a greater portion, local content, if you like.
Yes, and that was the uh, understanding I got from the, from the message from speaking with Lauren. Also, um, in the past two years, some of our local vendors have not participated. I noticed that there were some of our local vendors were. Were lacking from, from the markets. And I'm not sure if that was because of COVID or, or what the reasons were, but I'm, I'm under the impression that some of those vendors are looking to come back again. Now in twenty twenty two.
Yeah, I, I can think of one in particular that, that they didn't have the staff. So they couldn't be at their. Place of work and be at the park. I, I just feel that it might get too spread out and then there'll be congestion on the little footbridge that goes up and over the river. And so what they're wanting is to be partly on the one side, the, the Rails End Gallery side. And on the other side. To me, if I was, I mean, it's just a comment when you're doing a site visit with them. If I was a shopper, which I do attend the farmer's market quite often. I do, I think it's a bit too far. I think it's too spread out. We have space on what we call the field when in old days when Rotary Carnival used to set up. So I don't know what else we'd call that. Cause you know what I'm talking about? The, the largest flat open space. Why? The other side of the playground, to the east of the playground, why wouldn't they expand in that direction? Um, you know, to, to me, it's too spread out. I, I don't, and.
I can, I can talk to her about options. The one thing about the east side of the playground is it's quite often really wet there. So. Sometimes it would work, but other times it holds the water like, and I know the Parks Department trucks in soil in there, but. Um, so sometimes the year it would be a ideal spot to expand to, but other times of the year, it's very wet. Um, but I can, I can definitely talk to her about options because there is still the other side of the pathway as well. Um, again, there is a low lying area in there now that didn't exist in previous, like that's. Developed over the past few years as, as opposed to previous years.
And just even, you know, in the ban shell area, the, in front of the ban shell, there's, it's quite flat before it starts to go up a grade. You could. And, and then it's, if you visually don't see those other vendors, you're not gonna know what's over there. And honestly. Some people are gonna look and go, oh, that's too far. And I think it's gonna. Be, I don't have a problem with us letting them use the park and all the other uh things that we've done. We waived the transient trader fee, et cetera, and tried to promote the farmer's market. But I personally, as a shopper, think that they should be. In one spot. Pick a side. But that's.
I can definitely uh provide those options to her. The idea of going in front of the ban shell actually is quite a good one. So. Um, and we know that the ground, the ground is solid there. So, it's a good spot, yeah.
It is. You'd get several people over there. Um, and it's, you know, even if that, that's on a Tuesday, uh, doesn't matter if, if that music. Program goes again, that's not till the evening, not till five o'clock. Uh, Mallory, go ahead.
I just had a quick question for Andrea because I know I'm one of the people who, when the markets are busy, I drive by. Um, do they think they might get more people if they had two parking areas? Like if, if, cause if I could park at the other end, I'd probably actually go over the market. And, and that's just another opinion, right? Cause when the parking lot's that busy, it gives me so much anxiety that I just don't even stop. I would never even think to stop. Um, cause the parking's so congested. So I'm wondering if they could do it on the other side. If there was some logic there with the flow.
And that I don't know the answer to. I'd have to ask Lauren about that. But I I echo what you're saying, because I know myself, like, if I can't walk to it, or if I can't park where there's, you know, it's not very congested, then I don't bother. So, yeah. But I can ask her. I'll find out.
So so that's what I just sort of said, pick a side, one or the other, because I shopped when it was on the other side, the Rotary Beach side. And if the dog park is not in the way, you know, that is the best parking, that parking lot is is not use that nearly as much. It's not as well known. It's well, we finally it's marked. It does go great big green pea at the at the Maple Ave. But anyway, I just just to they may not want to be a spread out, but that's that's will be up to them. We will receive this report as presented. Mover in second or councillor Clark?
Um, yes, I agree, Madam Mayor. Yeah, there is some analysis going on in terms of those who can participate in the farmer's market. There's certain rules at the Ontario Farmers Market Association that's got this been a bit limiting. So the group's working on that. Also, as as Andrea has identified, Lauren has been proactive with other local farmers who've participated previously and also trying to bring in their they're trying to identify, you know, new farm based businesses and that type of thing that would that would benefit from that. So that's kind of ongoing. Angel Taylor's quite active in 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 this this new analysis that we're we're currently working on. So we're hoping to be able to to build, because this is the the farmer's market is the basis for for growing a local home based business. The other challenges, as you've identified, is is some of the farms don't aren't capable of generating enough stuff to both service restaurants and to be to be at the market. So that's being looked at. And also, the other thing that they're looking at is, you know, is there opportunity for some of the, you know, some of the the farmers to share tables? And that's again, that's being looked at. Well, some of them wasn't, you know, they didn't have, as Andrea identified, they didn't have the staff to be both working the farm and to be sitting at sitting there selling stuff. It doesn't it just wasn't working for some of them. So so there's a few, there's a few twists and turns that are 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 blocking you know, participation in the farmer's market and and hopefully we can resolve those over the next five, six months. Thanks.
Okay, there you go. It's gonna save food for thought. Okay, so I'll look for a mover in a second or two to receive the report. Councillor Smith, seconded by councillor Clark, I think I thought that, yep. Result that the committee, the whole receives the Halliburton County Farmers Market report as information. All in favor? Okay, carried. Time travelers. Yes, he reached out to me, but I knew he was talking to you. So I think I was waiting for this report to come forward.
Yes. And then they this, as you know, over the years, the time travelers too have moved locations in the parking lot, in the park, down the pathway, all over the place. I did include a few photos just to provide some some idea of how it looks when they're set up. They look to use our our park starting usually in June and going until sometime in September. It's weather dependent. They would come in every other Thursday and they work around our event schedule. So for instance, the Arts and Crafts Festival, they don't schedule anything. The time travelers wouldn't schedule anything that week. They'd go the week prior and the week after. They have a membership of ninety six members. A lot of their donations are sorry, they they charge them a membership fee. And then at the end of the season, they donate a lot of their proceeds from the membership fees back to the Halliburton Highlands Health Services Foundation. They try and they try and keep everything locally. What they're asking us is if they can have permission to move back into the park again this year. So last year, they were set up along the Headlake Park pathway. Since last year, the pathway has been widened. So and you look, if you look at the photo that I included, you can see that they're budding up or even hanging over the pathway a bit. So this year, they would definitely be on the pathway in in some sections. But the main request, the main reason they're asking to go back into the park is that a lot of their membership are older individuals who have a difficult time walking a certain distance. And I know when they when they have been able to set up in the park in the past, they do like to frequent our local businesses. They'll le- leave their cars set up. We'll have a few representatives there. Somebody might take a turn to go up and purchase a meal that they bring back to their car and they eat, or they get a few items from one of the local stores. But the big thing too is the proximity to the washrooms. Now, they realize that our this welcome center washrooms are closed after five P M and that there would be a fee associated, but there are still the privies. So they were asking just if they could be in the park for that closer proximity. So somebody doesn't have to walk all the way down from halfway down the Headlake Trail to get into the park to use the facilities, because once the cars are set up, they leave them set up for the duration of the of their showing, I guess, or their their event. They have noticed that they've been getting more young families coming and taking a look at the vehicles over the years. They they say they got quite a few people coming in. So and they engage in conversation with people and everything. So they have people from Bancroft, Bracebridge, Lindsay that come out sometimes. And just because they have ninety six members doesn't mean there's ninety six cars every time. Sometimes it's twenty cars, sometimes it's thirty cars. One thing, we've used them many years for Color Fest. It's they're a nice addition to have for Color Fest and we we'd like to keep a good relationship with them. We do we do run run the risk of losing the time travelers if we say that they have to set up along the pathway again this year. So I'm looking to Committee of the Whole for direction and permission to allow them to set up in Headlake Park. They won't set up if it's raining or if the ground like they're very cognizant of where they park. Number one, they don't want to ruin their vehicles. They they, you know, these are their pride and joy. And then, of course, they understand that we have to keep the the ground a certain way. They do realize that if they were to set up in our park, they'd have to enter on and off of York Street. They wouldn't be able to drive through the in front of the Welcome Center. And they would be looking to possibly set up on that the field or the grassy area instead of on off the pathways where we know we've had some issues with with mud and everything in the past.
Okay, so anyone have a problem with them moving Deputy Mary Kennedy?
Certainly supportive. I've enjoyed walking through the the displays and wishing I had the ability to do what a lot of them do. And so I totally support this and it's a great, great group of people. And moving them back into the park just fits. It's they've been there for years, very, very minimal damage. So I have no issues with it. I think it's great.
Okay. I think I see lots of nodding heads. Would you like to be the mover for that then? Yes, and I'll look for a second if I could. Councillor Smith, great. Everybody, I saw everybody's hand. So you can tell Paul that.
Thank you. They'll be happy. Thank you.
Okay, so that was moved by Deputy Mayor Kennedy, seconded by councillor Smith. Result that the committee, the whole recommends the council approve the request for the Halliburton Highlands Time Travelers to set up in the main part of Headlake Park for their cruise nights. All in favor? Great, carried. And lastly, the updated fee structure and park use agreement for special events at Headlake Park, which fingers crossed, I don't even want to say it, but yes, yes, twenty twenty two.
And the requests have been coming in. I know we've we've had some events where they're like, we were really hoping they're just waiting on some more information. So I brought back the fee structure that we had in November. I've included an updated paper copy of the park use agreement, but it doesn't have the fee structure in it. There's a caveat in the park use agreement saying once the fee structure is approved, I'll put it in there. I just I didn't want to put it in there yet. And then I'll have both the park use agreement available as a paper copy, but also on online, because currently it is on online, but I'll update it to be up to standard, because nobody at the moment has filled out a park use agreement, because I told them we had to wait.
Okay.
Yeah. So anyways, because with the Welcome Center, obviously, there's the washrooms and we need to have some sort of structure in place for 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 events that require like on an average day, given day in the summer, we had two exterior washrooms and the interior washroom open. If staff noticed the park was really busy, they would open up an additional washroom or two, which happened on occasion in July and August. But with an event, say you're expecting seven hundred people, there's a formula for how many washrooms you need available. And the the permanent privies do count towards that number. So we have four permanent privies in the park. And if you think your event's only running during the day and you have the four permanent privies and we already have three washrooms open, there are seven washrooms available for the for that event. However, if the event is running outside of our regular hours, or they have an anticipated attendance of a thousand people or more, or they don't want to calculate the privies into that calculation, then they require additional washrooms, which is either renting porta potties or paying us a fee to use our washrooms. So there is the fee structure there. Now, the thought is, let's say an event goes from ten A M to seven P M. So they're bridging the two the two timeframes. We could come up, it says, sorry, I'm looking at my other computer to see, because I don't have it printed in front of me. There's, where did I? There's a structure, there's a line that says that we can part charge based on the hour, what the hourly rate would be for each for each time structure. So for instance, if they were using five hours in the normal operating hours and then two hours, we I I can break it down by the hour. I actually have done that. I didn't include that on the chart, but I do have an hourly breakdown, which we could charge. And whichever, I guess, is less. So if they or they can pay the flat rate. So say they were having an event that went from from five P M to eleven P M and they needed all the washrooms, we say four, because we would already have three normally, it would be three hundred and fifty dollars for that timeframe. That helps cover just our our operating costs and bringing in extra staff to make sure we have the washrooms open. So I don't know if there's any comments about the fee structure or how how we would manage it.
Okay, I see a couple. So Deputy Mayor Kennedy first and then councillor Smith second.
Thanks, Andrew, for this. Definitely nice and clear for the people who are wanting to apply. Is there a a minimum threshold? Like, I'm just thinking small groups that ten or fifteen people are using the park, do they have to pay fifty dollars?
No, if ten or fifteen people are using the park, our three washrooms are already open. And the only time it would become an issue is if they're trying to use them after hours, because we have to bring in extra staff. Because from the May long weekend until the end of September, we're open from ten A M to five P M. So if they were looking to have ten or fifteen people at seven o'clock at night, then they would have to pay a fee, because we won't have staff on site.
Because it says in here, all events are required to pay a park use application fee of fifty dollars.
Oh, I I see. Sorry, I see what you're talking about the park.
Yeah, so. Let's get to the washrooms. Let's deal with the the fees first.
Yeah, yeah, it's it's for a big event. Like, I think it's when you get into dealing with more components. And this is something that council can talk about too. But I know, like, we have, for instance, the Early Years Centre, which is a service to the community. And they use the as parks fairly regularly throughout the summer to to run their moms groups or to do programming for young children. Up till now, we haven't charged a fee. If if we feel that there should be a fee for that, it would be a recurring thing. So they'd have the initial set and then to recurve. Same thing with the library. They use it for storybook programs and everything. And it's it's a courtesy to us that they fill out the park use agreement and that we know what's going on. We say if it's under fifteen people, they don't need a park use agreement. So say you're having a family bar, family picnic and you're a group of fifteen. Have your family picnic and enjoy it. We don't need to know. If you're getting into a larger group where you're twenty people, twenty five, thirty people, then we do need to know and have a park use agreement and something in place. But I'll I'll look to council for direction on that fee.
Anyone else want to comment to that? I think the the intent is there would not, you know, someone's advertising and using the word like it's an event and expecting even if it is forty people to come, that that becomes an event, Ontario Early Years or Library or home daycare going into the park, that's what the park's for. So yeah, okay, councillor Smith was next, and then councillor Clark.
Yeah, thanks. And and thanks, Andrew, for for pulling this together, bringing it back. One aspect of it that kind of caught my eye as I was looking over these numbers again. And that's for the the fee outside of your regular operating hours. Which could be, you know, if I had an event going to eleven P M, it could be six hours, it could be seven hours outside of the summer window. And and if the size said I only needed one washroom, the hundred and twenty five dollars, I'm not sure would cover our incremental expense associated with staffing it for six or seven hours. You know, and so I wondered if you might, you know, make a minimum of it's a minimum of two washrooms. I don't, you know, no matter the crowd, you've got to pay at least two hundred dollars. Otherwise, we're, you know, we're occurring incurring more expense for these events in terms of staff for the Welcome Center than we would be collecting from the from the user. We're providing a great service. And and, you know, taxpayers are being asked to subsidize. Me, that's problematic, right?
Yeah, I I would agree with that, actually. That was funny when I was doing the breakdown on the hourly rate, like, so say it was I thought about that. I thought after the fact, but I'd already submitted the report and everything. I thought maybe there should be a minimum for the evening hours, just because as you said, we are bringing in additional staff and we do want to make sure our costs are covered. So maybe there is a minimum of two washrooms, which would be two hundred dollars for an evening. But again, I looked at direction from others on that.
Do the staff get paid overtime? Like, are they being paid time and a half if they're working evening? Or is it still, you know, there's a basically a minimum wage position?
It's it's they'd be brought in on shifts. So we might have somebody who does the ten to five or ten to four and somebody else does five to eleven or four to eleven. Like, we have, we have to figure out it. I I can't do the scheduling yet, because I need to know what events we have going on and then look at how many staff we need at the moment. We can cover our daytime hours with the staff we have. When we get into looking at some evening events, we may need to hire one or two more casual people to help out to fill that gap. So we can have continuity throughout the day.
All right. Well, to me, if you're looking for input, it's it's problematic if we're if we're not recovering our costs. I mean, we see in the budget that you know, the Welcome Center and and the washrooms have been a big incremental cost. You know, being borne by the taxpayer during those regular hours. We're going to have extra hours, whatever the event is. It's got to cover the cost. And and that's where the, you know, the current approach that kind of had, you know, I mean, not it would be either at eleven P M. But do it an hourly basis, you would be reducing that amount if I only need it till seven P M, based on your explanation. And 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 so I think we've got to structure this action that we we don't add additional burden to the taxpayer in terms of those costs. It's got to be full recovery for those hours. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, councillor Smith. Tamara, I do see you, but councillor Clark, I'll let Tamara go and then councillor Clark, if you can hold that thought. Yeah, go ahead, Tamara.
I was just gonna say that Andrea and I did work out the hourly rates behind the scenes when we were reviewing the report. It was very last minute, though, so we have some work to do. But we did discuss it at the hourly rate level, because we were looking at how to apply it between an event spans from daytime to evening because of the different rates. So I think we can reasonably bring something back to the next meeting that reflects that discussion and ensures, as you say, that we're covering our costs and not being unreasonable at the same time with what we charge.
Yeah, I I the only thing that I see there is, and I know that you took some sample events of what you imagined those events to be. You know, there's nothing wrong with going forward one year the way this is as presented and then reviewing it next January or, you know, to to say how did this work in year one? This is going to be the first year that we're going to actually have events. We're going to actually have our Welcome Center and washrooms open. So we don't have to get it right on the first year. That's okay. We can we can review it and see what worked and what didn't. I find it very unlikely that someone would have an event that just triggered. You either have an event that's big, you having a concert in the park or something, you know, a big thing. You're not going to just have one washroom. It's going to be, you know, probably all four. Like, you know what I mean? You're not going to book a park for an extra. Now, I can't remember the threshold of the people that, you know, we have two washrooms open and highly unlikely that you'd only rent one when you see a hundred and twenty five dollars. It's more likely that you'd need several washrooms open because you have a larger event. Councillor Clark, what do you think?
Yeah, well, you're you're pretty much right on on par with what I was thinking is that this is the first year. So we're going to have to do some data collection. So perhaps Andrea, as as part of of the the application process, there's a bit of a follow up, you know, what's working, what's not working. You know, I think, you know, it's going to be great for some people. Others are going to find that, you know, it needs some tweaking and and both from the point of view of of us managing the the park and and as councillor Smith has identified, recovering costs, but also in terms of its usability and how flexible it is for for people who want to use it for different types of events. So this first year will be will be data collection.
So we could go one way or the other. We could ask Andrea and with Tamara's help to bring back another report, or we can accept this as presented. It'll come back to council, we'll adopt it and but know that somewhere in there, there's a review process at the end of the summer of twenty twenty two to do an analysis. So Tamara first and then councillor Smith.
I'd like the opportunity to review it with Andrea Mueller, because I think logistically, we do need to know those hourly rates because of some of the examples we ran through behind the scenes. So I don't think two weeks is going to hurt anything. of some of the examples we ran through behind the scenes. So I don't think two weeks is going to hurt anything.
Fine. That's a great idea. Counselor Smith?
I was going to make that same point. It, it seems to me that, you know, Andrea Mueller there and Tamara said that uh, since the report was printed, they've kind of done some further analysis and they, they had some uh, I'll call it improved thinking, uh, maybe some minor adjustments. And there's no reason they couldn't bring that back to uh, to council in two weeks. Uh, uh, and if it came back and said, well, there's a minimum of two hundred dollars or whatever. Uh, you know, that could solve this problem. And we don't need to take a whole year to uh, to learn what staff has already figured out, uh, you know, since they prepared the initial report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, Mallory through you, could you tell me if the resolution as presented needs to be revised?
Uh, just, just the first part. Um, we can just say that uh, the committee, the whole uh approve it as amended to ensure cost recovery and then continue on as, as the rest of it's written.
Uh.
So I, I'll read it.
Yeah, you, I'll, I'll, you read it and then I'll look for mover, secondor. Thanks.
Okay, so be resolved that the committee, the whole recommends that council approve the proposed fee structure for the welcome center washrooms as amended to ensure cost recovery is how I'm suggesting. And further that council direct staff to bring forward a revised fee by law to the February twenty twenty-two meeting for approval. And further that committee of the whole recommends that council direct staff to include the proposed fee structure in the park use agreement.
Okay, do I have a mover and a secondor for that? Counselor Smith? Good, good. So Counselor Smith, Counselor Clark. Okay. All in favor? Okay, and that's carried. Great. Good discussion.
Can I ask a question? Sorry.
Yes, absolutely.
Um, so this has nothing to do with uh fees, but it does have to do with park use. And I just want a clarification to make sure I'm providing the right information. Um, one of the people that is looking to have an event in the park, uh, quite a large event, had asked Alyssa if we could make an exception to allow vehicle traffic to go through the front of the welcome center. She had said, I don't think that's possible. And she contacted me. I too think that we need to keep it closed off as we have because it, it's for safety reasons for um, people coming in and out of the center. And if we allow it for one event, all the events will possibly expect that. And we have the, we, we, we will have tables set up there again in the summer. So am I, is that okay that I say no?
I see lots of nodding. I think the, in the park plan, uh, when the welcome center kind of got fit in there after, it was only ever going to be for emergency access. It was always meant to be a pedestrian area. Uh, so I see lots of nods, no, to, to not allow it to be open for through traffic.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was on the right page.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So there you go on that one. Thanks Andrea.
Thank you. Have a good day.
We don't have a lot more on our agenda, but enough. And I don't want to push the meeting. I'm going to look to a show of hands if people would like a fifteen-minute break. I see yes. So we'll recess for fifteen minutes and we'll be back at uh, you know, uh, ten forty-five, be back at your computers approximately, give or take. Okay, see you in fifteen. Bye-bye. Okay, we're uh back from recess. Uh, so the first item is our museum report. And I guess we're bringing Kate Butler in. Morning Kate.
Hello, how you doing?
Great. So we have your report in front of us. If there's anything you want to highlight, go ahead.
Just the fact that the museum's back open again. So yay. Yes, and yeah, we're, we're certainly gearing up for what's going to be, you know, after a couple of years of, you know, the, the open, close, you know, the, the unpredictability. Um, this year is going to be the, the first year in a couple of years that's, I think is going to feel sort of normal. So that's, that's exciting as we, as we make plans moving forward. So no, that's, that's the big news around here.
Okay, yes, fingers crossed. Um, any questions uh for Kate regarding museum? Nope. Okay, well, thank you for coming in for our meeting today. Very short and sweet, but I will get a mover and a secondor to uh, acknowledge your report. Counselor Clark, Counselor Wood Roberts. You resolved that the committee, the whole acknowledged received the Halliburton Highlands Museum Report. All in favor? Okay, Carrie, thanks. Thanks Kate.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have building and bylaw. Again, another year-end summary report. Wait till Carl gets in before I say too much. Morning Carl. And Robert's coming in. Morning Robert.
Morning.
Morning. So first up, uh, and again, another annual report, which these are very helpful for council to see. So Carl, if you want to speak to your building permit report for twenty twenty-one.
Uh, yeah, I think one of the most significant ones is the uh, total number of dwellings uh for twenty twenty-one. Um, the, the primary residence uh column doesn't really change. It's the seasonal residential ones that uh definitely uh uh made an impact last year uh with the uh increased number. Uh, otherwise permits were up, fees were uh, permit revenue was up, construction value was uh, was definitely uh significant uh change from last year, uh, la- last year as well in comparison from twenty seventeen on.
Yes, it's, it's huge. Um, do, as well as the number of the you, uh, seasonal residential units, but it, did you notice too, the, the construction materials or the value of construction is continually going up? People aren't building a twelve hundred square foot cottage. They're building.
Yeah, it's uh, I, I guess people are taking into account that the, the building materials aren't going up, but people are also building substantially larger cottages. We see, I, again, I've, I've mentioned it before, but we usually see maybe one or two monster cottages go up a year. This, this year, the, a lot of them were monster cottages going up. Um, people are spending money here and uh, it's not a bad thing.
No, and we have some good builders and it's kept you guys busy. I can't believe it's just shy of the hundred million dollar mark. That's um incredible. And actually, I think the next report is our January building permit report, which is already kicking off to be a good year. Like it's, you know, normally in January, you don't get building permit reports, but are too many building permits. Um, questions though on the annual one? Any questions, comments? Let's receive that first then. Mover, secondor to receive that. Uh, Deputy Mayor Kennedy and Counselor Smith. You resolved that the committee, the whole received the twenty twenty-one building permit activity report as information. All in favor? Okay, carried. Great. So now is the uh, just the regular monthly report?
Yeah, nothing, nothing big to highlight on that one. It's uh, it's a typical January.
Okay. Any questions on that? Okay, we'll receive. Mover, secondor. Uh, Counselor McKenney and Counselor Wood Roberts. You resolved that the committee, the whole received the January twenty twenty-two building permit activity report as information. All in favor? Okay, great. Carried. And lastly is the bylaw update report for January. So Robert, I'll turn that over to you.
Good morning. Uh, just as you, counsel and Madam Mayor through you, uh, changed, we changed up the uh, the bylaw report, the way it looks. Uh, uh, now that I, I've been here a couple of years, I can give some stats and some comparison. Um, if there's any uh, any questions or anything that I can try to answer.
Okay, uh, any questions, comments to Robert? Uh, Counselor Smith, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Robert. Uh, thank you for uh, uh, you know, the improvements, additional detail in your reports. Uh, had a couple of uh questions. As I understood this correctly, I just wanted to confirm that. You, you uh, you received uh six complaints during January. Uh, two of those have been resolved. So uh, the backlog of complaints uh would have risen from uh nineteen that were carried over from twenty twenty-one to the total of twenty twenty-three, uh, total of twenty-three now. Is that correct?
Are you, you're looking at the, the second table down near the bottom? Or the big total?
Well, I was looking at uh, uh, you know, both aspects of it, I guess you, where you, you uh, you had received uh six complaints in January. Uh, and um, and then I uh, um, you know, looked at the second uh report and it, it referred to two uh being resolved in January. Number of infractions uh resolved of the January was uh, one in encroachment, one in dumping. So a total of two.
Right, though those are the ones that were cleared off for this month, for last, sorry, last month. Last month.
So that the total number of outstanding, uh, you know, that's listed there of twenty-three would include uh, four from January or, or whatever. And uh, it's, as I said, it's now twenty-three. It was nineteen at the end of the year. Is that correct?
Right, so it's, it's a, it's the continuation of last year. So it all adds up in, under one.
Well, again, is there anything that council can do to help you get these uh complaints resolved? Uh, um, you know?
It's a, it's a, it's a waiting game because I'm playing, I'm playing fair with the, with the people and, and, and I'm not, uh, I'm not um, heavy-handed, being heavy-handed with them as instructors when I, when I, when I started. So it's, now it's, it's a waiting game of giving them their deadlines and meeting those deadlines and, and um, and yeah, it's, it, I can, if council wishes me to step it up a little harder on them, then I can do so. But it's, it's a waiting game right now for deadlines. I, I Carl and I would have to talk if there's anything that council can do to help. But uh, like, as I say right now, it's, it's me trying to catch up on last year's outstanding complaints and, and see if I can close them as quickly as possible and be as fair as possible as well.
Yeah, and to Counselor Smith's comment, I said, I don't think we need to micromanage. I think he, he was simply asking if there, do you have all the tools you need? Do you have all the uh information that you need? Is, is there something you need from us? Otherwise, keep doing your job and it is a process. And sometimes these things take time. And if you say to somebody, you've got sixty days to respond to such and such, then you have to wait the sixty days till they respond. So we're not, we're not trying to micromanage. I think we're just asking, is there something else that we could be doing? That's all.
Um, I, I, I'll, I can look into it, see if there's, there's anything that I, I could bring to council and like I, I will talk to Carl about it as well. But uh, right now off the top of my head, uh, I can't think of anything right at the moment.
Okay, Carl?
I just want to add that we do give people a reasonable timeline and we always ask them, what is their reasonable timeline? And are we going to um, agree with their reasonable timeline to bring things into conformity on a volunteer basis? Depends on the situation uh usually, but again, is it reasonable? If yes, then we'll go with their timeline to get it corrected. And sometimes that is when they come back in, you know, in the summer. And that's what it happens to be in, in a lot of cases and uh.
Yep, I think everything's being followed up on and, but if there, you know, if there's anything that we can do, then just keep us in, informed. Um, Counselor McKenney, did you want to comment on to that? Oh, you went, yeah, there you go. You just.
Yeah, um, I, I'd just like to say, uh, that's great, uh, Rob and Carl, that uh, you're giving the people the adequate time to respond to any uh issues. And I think it's really a, a nice message we're sending to our uh, all our taxpayers. So, good job. Thank you.
Right. Um, just on the parking meters on the main street. So when the EOC was still meeting, they um, they oh, uh, that had to come to council because the EOC is meeting, but we're not under a state of emergency anymore. We can't make any financial decisions. So parking meters were covered until uh, stage, we go into stage three. With, if we're following the guidelines, doesn't Mallory or Tamara, do you know when stage three, is that March something or other? Twenty-first? All I'm going to say to that is, I don't, we'd need to say the date out loud right now in this committee meeting, but we need to give ample notice, use social media, make sure that the meters are off, parking will now be enforced and maybe even give one or two grace days, maybe a something in the windshield saying, you know, parking meters are in effect because people won't know. They, so uh, I see, Robert, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I, I, I believe I read March, in the middle of March or the beginning of March, um, would be the timeline for uh going into, re-entering into stage three, if I'm not mistaken. I can look it up, look that up and bring it back to uh next council.
No, we don't, we don't need to, it's come back. And I'm just thinking off the top of my head when I saw about the parking meters. I know it was the twenty-one days, twenty-one days. So unless something changes at the province, it's whatever date in March, doesn't matter what it is. Let's make sure that we give ample opportunity and notice. And maybe even, I believe when we've done this in the past before, even when we weren't in COVID and we've covered them up, we've given a little bit of a grace period. Maybe can we email the BIA? They can use their, um.
No, absolutely. And uh, I know last year when, when EOC decided to open them back up April first, uh, what we did, there was, uh, I had printed up some um, little, I was half pamphlets, you could say, and, and just and gave a week of uh, um.
Grace.
A grace period. Sorry, thank you. And just every time I found a meter that was not paid for or vehicle not paid for, they got their little slip on, on there, just advising that the meters are back in effect and that they have, they do have a, a week grace period. Um, I did uh also post on social media on all three of our platforms and our Instagram and, and Facebook, sorry, and uh even Twitter, I believe.
Perfect. That's all I was looking for. That's, that's great. And I think council would look to that too. Is that okay? Don't need to bring them back. Don't need to bring it back. Okay, so I do need to receive uh, the uh bylaw update report if I could. Counselor Clark, second by Counselor McKenney. You resolved that the committee, the whole received the bylaw update report for January twenty twenty-two as information. All in favor? Okay, that's carried. Thanks, gentlemen. Have a good day. Great. Okay, and we're going to go into finance. Uh, Barbara's not here, but it's just the check summary. So usually there's not questions, a check summary. So I'll look for a mover and a secondor to receive. Uh, Counselor Wood Robertson, Deputy Mayor Kennedy. You resolved that the committee, the whole acknowledges received the December twenty uh twenty-one and January twenty twenty-two check summaries. All in favor? Okay, carried. Oh, excuse me. Okay, administration. This is always fun. Council remuneration. For, I'm going to turn it over to Mallory and then uh, I may say a little something after. Okay, go ahead, Mel.
Yeah, so it's um, um, council needs to review this uh at least once during the four-year term. So it's time for us to do that. Um, I've added a few uh remuneration bylaws from townships around us. Something to note, and you'll notice, I, I pulled the most current ones for each township. And there's a few townships like Highlands East and Lake Bays, and they're, they're on the same schedule as us. So theirs are going to reflect what they had in twenty eighteen passed. But um, some of them in here as well are, are more current. So that council can take a look. Um, a few things administratively that I want to note. One is that we don't have committee wholly listed in our current bylaws. So we might want to add something in there for it. Something I really like in County of Halliburtons is that they put a notation that unless you're on an approved leave by council, your pay will be docked by this, which I think would be really helpful just going forward that we know that's the process. So if council approves your leave, you continue on as usual. So um, otherwise, I think this is a good discussion for council to have without me uh interjecting, but administratively, those are a few things I wanted to note.
Well, let's do the administrative part first before we do the dollar amount. Does everyone, we need to reflect committee, the whole, we need to, I really like the, the changing of the wording to, you know, if someone's on an approved leave. So uh, is, is with a someone's on an approved leave. So, uh, is, is with a nod of heads or show of hands, is everyone in favor of those administrative changes? Okay, reflecting the committee structure and also the leave. So, um, so I'll just speak to it. This was four years ago. This was very controversial. It came to council, it got defeated, it came back to council. Uh, Dyser was, was very behind, particularly in the deputy, uh, Reeve and the counselor positions. Um, we had at that time polled six municipalities, three within our county and three outside the county. And Mayor will remember. So what we did then is, is a fairly significant increase to the counselors and the deputy mayor. There was a slight increase to the mayor position. We included the two thousand, uh, dollars of a health spending account that is self-administered. It caps at two thousand a year. Um, it's not eighty-twenty. It's not like a, uh, we, we didn't go with a supplier, as long as it's C R A, approved receipt for medical receipt, and that's up to each counselor to make sure that they get those in. Um, we don't have any other. I guess I'll call them perks or incentives. We do not have, uh, cell phones or, uh, devices or any such thing. They are included. And you'll see in another bylaw where, uh, counselors are given a, um, I can't remember which one it was. Might have been the Lake of Bays was outside of the county where they're given an allotment for a device. So I personally have used my own cellphone since I've been on council, pay a cellphone bill, but I do a lot of work on cellphone. So those are all things to consider, not just the monetary amount. And the reason Dyser came up four years ago to do it the way that they did is the, um, government took away, we used to get, uh, one-third of our salary was not taxed. So when we got our T fours, it would reflect what we were paid. And then what we are, uh, what we put in on that box in the T four in terms of income. And it was only two-thirds of the total pay. And that was to sort of cover expenses. So, you know, it was good in, in twenty eighteen and we also, to make it less controversial, we made it effective January first, twenty nineteen. Or maybe it was even December first. It could have been December, but we, so we can, can make a decision now that is current. We can make a decision that is, it comes into effect, uh, on a different date. And the last thing I'll say is the Halliburton County did a significant increase to the warden's salary. So what's in that package is not current. You can look online if you want to get information. The warden has been increased and also the county counselors have been increased and also to reflect a different structure. Uh, because we're now doing committee, the whole at the county. So. So we, I think we have approval for the administrative stuff to include committee, the whole and, um, the other thing that you mentioned. Mallory, so now.
So my, my question with adding committee, the whole is, you can add it in the way you list the council, for example. But the decision that council would need to make is what's, how many is it reasonable to miss? So would you say one council meeting and one committee, the whole meeting? Uh, without penalty? Or I know others who, um, do different structures to commit the whole. They actually give a per diem rate, obviously, but, um, so that's a discussion for council to have too. How, how do we add committee, the whole into it? Because I think we'd all agree that it's ideal that you come to as many as possible. Committee of holes where a lot of the discussion takes place. So it's an important meeting, but, it's just building it into that by law.
Okay, so again, let's just talk about that. So do people want to say that we, you know, you can miss one council meeting and one committee, the whole meeting? Without dot, losing any pay or what was the other wording you had in terms of? Unless on approved leave from?
Yeah, unless on an approved leave from council.
Okay, so is everybody, a show of hands at one council meeting, one committee meeting, you're allowed to miss? Without explanation, I mean, you still send your regrets to the, the, um, clerk. I mean, honestly, I don't know about you guys. Well, who's taken a lot of holidays in COVID? Not me, but it really, that we will be able to, and it really, really, this job is, uh, very consuming and it does tie you down to almost never get a two-week and it, you know, vacation or other family things or, uh, even medical appointments that you can't, can't predict. So, show of hands, is everyone okay with the missing of one council meeting? Okay, so we're all okay with that? Is that okay, Mallory, for the administrative side? Tamara, I think you had a comment you wanted to make.
I can hold it till you get to the remuneration portion if you like.
Okay, so, and just to keep in mind too, Mallory did, you know, put in a lot of information here, but when you look at Dyser's twenty eighteen, don't forget, we've had one point five. And of course, I made notes and they're all at home. So the mayor's salary is an example, I'll use myself, is over thirty thousand now, just because of one point five, one point five and into twenty twenty-two, one point five. So it isn't, it isn't exact because the couple other ones that are included in there, you have to see the date of their bylaws, twenty twenty-one. So. There are things where we could be compensated for electronics as well, if you wanted to, or devices. Uh, Deputy Mayor Kennedy, go right ahead.
Yeah, I was hoping that we would have had the twenty twenty-two remuneration rates in this, so we'd have an idea exactly where we are. And also, when you speak to electronics, I think that we have to look at the county and their I T policies that are coming forward with the respective, uh, counselors using phones and laptops. May well be changes coming that, uh, we have to use, uh, county provided, uh, tools to help with the security. So that's something we need to consider going forward. Um, yeah, the county did make a big change, moved from, uh, the per diems on basically eighty dollars for committees and outside agencies to, um, substantial increase. I've got the new numbers, forty-four thousand now for the warden, uh, nineteen-seven for the deputy warden and eighteen-one for counselors. So, but there is no extras other than if they're outside agencies. So, um, I would support some kind of a, uh, an increase here to keep in track, uh, also maybe help attract more people to, to run for office. Uh, it's a time-consuming effort. And, uh, anyway, so I'll just leave it at that. I don't know what the actual, what the magic number is, but that's my comments right now.
Okay, Tamara? Good, thanks.
A couple of points there. I, I think we can probably discuss the electronics later. I think one thing we've talked about is if we do need any electronics, it's not necessarily a perk or something that has to be policyed because it may just be an operational tool for communications and so forth. It depends how we look at it, but that's certainly something we can deal with down the road as well as things change. Um, in terms of pay rates, I know some of the other municipalities locally have used their pay equity consultants to recommend pay rates to council, which helps keep some of the discussion maybe off the counselor's backs. And I know you're setting rates for a future council, but there's still maybe awkward because some of you are maybe planning to be on it. Um, but if that's something you'd be interested in, I could reach out to Mary Ann Love to ask her for a quote to do such a review and what the timeline would be. Or you can, or we can just look at other areas because, again, she'll consider things like population complexity of the organization, budgets, that kind of thing. When she makes recommendations, it's not just what do your neighbors make?
I, I, I appreciate that, but that costs money and I think we're really pretty close. So I think that, uh, we can do, we, we certainly did this, um, internally ourselves, but I, I know I fought for the increase and it wasn't, definitely was not for myself because each time as I changed in my roles of, as I've served at Dyser Council from award counselor to the deputy to the, it really didn't actually, I, I never actually benefited from it, but that's okay. Uh, we do it to attract good people. It takes an enormous amount of time. It is, it is, uh, not for the faint of heart whatsoever. And to do this job well, it is, um, you know, yes, sure, some weeks are a little bit lighter than others, but the complexity of the issues that we have facing us today and will continue in the future. Um, you know, it, it is good, fair compensation. So we, we could, we don't have to make a decision today. If there's further information, Mallory, you look like you're about to say something. Go ahead.
Sorry. Um, um, fair point is made that you should see what you're actually getting this year. So, um, it would be helpful, we can return with a report that kind of gives that information, then you can do a direct comparison. And then I've noted the other changes that you guys have suggested. So we can start putting that together and then maybe that's a better place to make. I, I brought this forward quite early, so we, we have time to discuss this. So I, I can bring it back, um, with what you're making currently and then, and then we can talk from there. If that makes sense.
I think that would help, uh, as well. Um, you know, we do have, uh, there, there is mileage to consider. Did anyone want to consider any kind of, uh, like I said, it was only municipality outside of the county, which was, um, uh, so it, i- in Lake of Bays, one, under benefits. Number eleven, local members of council, ward counselors, receive an information technology allocation of twelve hundred dollars in the first year. Uh, and all members of council receive five hundred each year thereafter for the remainder of the term of office. I suppose if you had to go out and buy a new laptop or a new device. So, yeah, I, I, I think you're just given that. You don't even need to submit a receipt. It's assuming that you're going to need some technology. So, would anyone like to include anything like that? Or just leave it out? We haven't had it before. Leave it out. Okay, Tamara?
I think that's what I was saying before, that I think that's not necessarily something we need to policy, but we'll review it as it comes forward with the changes to technology.
Okay, so we won't include that. So, and also to, like I said earlier, when we did, when we passed this four years ago, it was at the end of term to be effective for the new term. So that is something we can, so wouldn't affect this year's budget, uh, at all. Um, and, uh, go, uh, Deputy Mayor Kennedy and then Counselor Smith.
Yeah, just, uh, on the mileage thing, what rate are we going to land on there? So the government of, uh, Canada? Government rate or is it the one that, uh, has been used by the county or is it one we're going to come up with? That's something else we should just add in there as far as the mix.
Whatever our policy, what's our mileage rate? It's pretty comparable with everything in the county, I think. Tamara, does anyone know offhand? I haven't filled a claim for mileage for a year and a half years. I've been anywhere. I seriously. I don't even drive to Minden anymore, I said. Um, okay, I'm just trying to see where our bylaw was originally. One sec. In twenty eighteen sixty-two was Dyser's bylaw, like I said, uh, yeah, and it says, whereas the da-da-da-da. I'm just trying to think when it became in effect. I know it was late in the year. I know it was, it was, uh, so that is something to consider, even if we made a decision now or in the next month.
It was December first, twenty eighteen. So it was the time it had rolled over. Yeah.
So nobody from the old term of council benefited. They truly just looked at it as, uh, as for the next term. That's right. So let's get some more information, a little bit of a chart to see exactly what our, uh, twenty twenty-two rate is, including the one point five percent that we would have received or whatever it is, one point, whatever the increase was. Um, and we can bring it back to council? In two weeks? Or do you want to bring it back to committee, the whole for discussion? I think we're not in a hurry. We can, we can bring it back to March, committee, the whole.
Sure.
Is fine. Is that okay with everybody? So that if we land on a decision, then it would be bringing to the, uh, it would be passed at the March, um, Dyser Council meeting. And we don't need, we don't, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Smith, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Uh, just a, a question. I, I do recall, uh, um, you know, in the previous term that there was, uh, as you said, uh, multiple iterations. Um, I don't know though, was there any sort of, uh, public consultation, uh, uh, or is it just the counselors, uh, trying to decide what it should be?
It was counselors, but it was very public. Like I say, it came to council, it got defeated, it came back to council and got, um, you know, it was, uh, we looked at different things. We looked at, I think we're the only counselors in the county that are not on a health benefit plan through their municipality, whether it's, you know, green shields or something like that. So that was something that, uh, it was going to be very expensive to put seven more people. I think it was about thirty-five hundred dollars a person, whereas we determined if we did a health spending account, it would be easily, more easily administered, less, uh, just so that, so we, we just reviewed it ourselves. We didn't, uh, it wasn't public, however, because it made the news, it was in the public, there was lots of people and it was glaringly obvious. I mean, as deputy Reeve, I made less than a counselor in a municipality that has half the population. That was kind of like a bit of an eye-opener for me and I've never done this job for the money. But I deserve, as all of you do, to be compensated for the work we're doing. So it was a real change of, uh, talking about remuneration is always difficult. People think, oh, those counselors make too much money, but.
I just, uh, I, I will ask about the public consultation. I didn't know. It, it, it's obviously an awkward topic. Uh, but it's also, uh, a question, what is our objective in setting the compensation? Um, you know, you mentioned being paid fairly relative to peers in other municipalities, uh, um, the deputy mentioned about attracting people, uh, uh, to, uh, to the job. Um, and, um, and so sometimes these things, uh, might start best with, okay, what are we trying to accomplish if we're going to make a change here? And, um, and then you can even ask, okay, is that change those objectives? But those changes, uh, would those objectives rather be better addressed? Or also be, uh, complemented by other changes? Um, you know, so we have a five wards today with, uh, counselors being elected, one from each ward. Um, and, um, um, you know, we've got seven counselors, could have five, could have nine. There's a lot of things that could happen, uh, that might address a set of objectives if you had a specific concern or a problem you're trying to solve. And, um, and, and so I, and maybe council needs to have that discussion. You can't have staff have that discussion, but, uh, uh, to me, that's maybe a place to start, uh, the conversation. And if, if we don't want to do that, if we don't have a problem we're trying to solve, well then what's wrong with where we are now? Uh, you know, and keep adding the one and a half percent a year. It's kind of where I was coming from. I did, I, 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 because I don't know the problem we're trying to solve. Therefore, why change anything?
So it's because it's mandatory to review this every, uh, term. So that's not a problem. It's that Mallory had to bring this to council today. I totally agree with you. By the time we do the math on what our twenty twenty-two rates actually are to our peers, we may find the only change we're going to do is to make sure we include committee, the whole and, um, uh, at the, you know, someone's on a leave, an approved leave. So it doesn't have to come to council for, for that situation. Um, because then in our procedural bylaw, we talk about electronic participation and that may, you know, we might want to keep, but we may, we don't, maybe don't have a problem. I, I think we fixed the problem four years ago, Counselor Smith. And we brought ourselves up to par and I think we're, so I'm not actually necessarily suggesting anything, but I think we need to look at apples to apples. So I'm not making twenty-eight thousand nine hundred sixty-seven dollars. I'm making, I don't know what it is, thirty thousand and one dollar or something. Let's look at that. We'll bring it back to committee of a whole for discussion and the only change might be the administrative change. Sounds good. Everybody okay with that? Tamara, I did see your hand up, but I don't know if I was in the middle of talking and I didn't want to lose my train of thought because that can happen.
Yeah, I was just going to comment on what you're trying to achieve. One of the things speaks to what Deputy Mayor Kennedy mentioned in terms of trying to attract people to these roles as well, because they're very important and it's hard for people in our society, if they work full-time, to sometimes meet the requirements of the roles as demanding as they are now. So I think part of it is just making sure we're fair. Um, that we can compensate people fairly for the time that they put in. As you know, it's different from one ward to the next and one counselor to the next, but it's just overall, I think there's some overarching objectives that you want to achieve through a, through a review.
Okay, so I think we can hold off to, because we're not in a hurry to pass anything. Nobody's wanting to get a significant increase for twenty twenty-two, other than what we're, um, receiving with the cost of living or the whatever, the other one point, whatever. Can't remember if it's at one point five or one point two-five, but anyway, whatever was increased this year. Um, so we'll wait to March and have that conversation. Again, I do have resolution though, and I'm not sure if, uh, what it says. I just think I should just add to it, Mallory, to say.
Yeah. You don't have to add it. I, I've got it all written down, but the, it just says that you reviewed it, which you did. So, but I will bring it back to March.
Okay. Great. Okay, so mover, seconder for that, please? Uh, Deputy Mayor Kennedy and Counselor Clark. Your result, the council has reviewed bylaw twenty eighteen dash sixty-two, being a bylaw to establish remuneration rates for members of council. All in favor? Okay, great. Good discussion. Uh, and one last thing, which is under planning and land information. And we've had Jeff waiting in the wings for a while. Hi, Jeff.
Good morning.
Morning. Okay.
Yeah, thank you. So this matter was first discussed at council meeting, uh, in January. Um, as requested, staff obtained comments from the Ministry of Northern Development, Mines, Natural Resources and Forestry, um, as well as the Ministry of Environment, Conservation, Parks and Fisheries and Oceans, Canada. Um, each agency has provided comments within the scope of their respective jurisdictions. Um, as per the report, the M and R. As per the report, the M and R clarified that their role is to develop municipal planning authorities and to review and confirm the wetland, that wetland evaluations are completed in accordance with the Ontario Wetland Evaluation System. The Ministry of Environment note that they have been in contact with the, with the property owner who has voluntarily agreed to halt any filling until a habitat assessment is completed to determine whether there's any species of at risk present on site. Lastly, Fisheries and Oceans Canada state that they want to visit in the spring. This is when the water's highest and it's easiest for them to. So that's a quick summary of, of the comments received from those agencies. I guess I'll just open this up to the floor. If council has any questions for staff, I'll try and answer them.
Okay. Well, thanks for follow up on that. So I'll look to see if there's any questions. Councillor Smith?
Thank you. And, and Jeff, thank you for, for getting this back so quickly. You know, it was just discussed at the council meeting a couple of weeks ago. And so you've been remarkably quick and able in doing this research and providing this background. So thank you for that, in particular, to given the public concerns. I think that's impressive on your part. So, you know, when I read this, it seems like there's a variety of ministries, both federal and provincial that, you know, have some role in this. But if it weren't for the public complaints, you know, would these ministries even be aware of what's going on in this property? Would they have any process? You know, you mentioned the need for a habitat assessment to be completed. You know, now, was there any way that this property owner could have or should have known in advance that the habitat assessment was going to be required before they did any work in these wetlands?
Well, I, I think any property owner needs to be aware that before they do any work of that nature, that they should contact the municipality. We are a good starting point and we can provide them direction to the appropriate approval authority. However, a, a lot of the time, you're right, it does fall back to, to public comments to begin the enforcement process.
Oh, you know, in this case, is again, not having been personally involved, but based on the reports that were made to us, it was suggested that, you know, some of these letter writers had contacted our bylaw enforcement officer. And, and they were told, or he apparently told them, and I, again, I wasn't involved, I'm just based on what I read in these letters, that he said there was nothing you could do. There was no municipal bylaw. You know, would he have said something about the need for a habitat assessment? Oh, again, how are people to know?
Well, I, I don't think it's necessarily our place to state that there needs to be a habitat assessment. I think, I think we are correct to say that we don't currently have any bylaw to help enforce this. And that they should contact those agencies to determine what is required at those levels. So they weren't correct in saying we don't have a bylaw currently to monitor, currently to protect this from this kind of situation happening in the future.
Sorry, they were correct or weren't correct?
Nope. The, the bylaw officer was correct. We don't have a bylaw to prevent this from happening now or in the future. As you, as mentioned last month, there is the, the process happening at the county level. And they are, that process would have, if approved, would have prevented this from happening.
So councillor Smith, we don't have a site alteration bylaw and that ultimately is what's sitting at the county right now for discussion. But keep in mind, the, these, this property in question, they have rights. They're, they really were victimized. You know, things were said on social media and, and other methods of, of, you know, about them personally, and they are undertaking, doing some studies themselves that is not, nobody's asking them to do this. They are doing this on their own volition. I, I recall a property that was looking for severance in DICE ARDS. And we, our planning department said, I don't know if you're going to get, be able to get another lot there because on a map, this area says EP. So on a nice flat map and a piece of paper, there's a big area says EP. If you want to go at your own expense and get, and like, what is the exact environmental assessment? Or what's the thing that they would get? Jeff, I'll finish what I'm saying. You know the property I'm talking about. And if it's determined to delineate, delineate exactly where the EP area is, those maps are very general and broad. But when you ground source it with an expert and come back to us, now you could come back and find out there is not room for a building envelope, two septics and a well, and still meet the setback. Well, luckily for this person who wanted to sever a lot, they undertook that expense. They had that done. They were able to prove that there was, went to Lynn Division, they were able to create a second lot. So just because an area shows on a map is all green is EP, that does not mean that there isn't land that is not developable on it. And I think that that was a big confusion in some of the comments that they think the whole area is EP. It is, it is not. There is a, so Jeff, is it an environmental assessment? That that person need, on the lot that I'm referring to, trying to be discreet and not say, well, someone wanted to sever a lot. We weren't sure. They were able to sever the lot. Do you know what I'm talking about?
I don't recall that one specifically, but you're correct. The, our official plan outlines the process that property owners can undertake to more accurately define the boundaries of that environmental protection zone. So it does include an environmental assessment of some sort and a surveyor to, to delineate accurately where that is on a plan. And then they have to go through for a zoning bylaw amendment application to change that zone.
Yeah. Okay. Councillor Smith and then Deputy Mayor Kennedy.
Yeah, thank you. And, and thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I don't know the property owner involved here. And I, I certainly haven't criticized that owner. I'm not going to criticize the owner. And in fact, I think it's important we highlight here that Jeff's report has indicated that the voter, the owner voluntarily ceased work and, and is waiting for, you know, advice or direction from these various ministries who, you know, have a expertise to, to weigh in. Because the letters suggested that a stop work order had been, or some of the letters suggested a stop work order had been issued. And the facts are, no, that isn't the case. The owner voluntarily said, hey, there's a lot of complaining going on. There's outrageous things being said on social media. I'm going to stop work here and, and let the, you know, the experts weigh in. I have another question for Jeff. You know, the province has a managed forest concept that allows property owners to make an application for, you know, a lower rate of property taxation. If they own a forested area, I think it's 25 acres or something, has the minimum. And, you know, they have to have some expert reports prepared and is any such concept available to an owner who has wetlands on their property? And where people, you know, ministries, maybe you can't do anything with that wetland. Well then, do they get a break on their property taxes? Is there a way for that to happen?
Thank you. That's a great question and, and one I don't know the answer to. That's something I, I could talk to Barbara after this meeting and try and find out for you. But yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
I, both Tamara and I are shaking our heads. I don't, I don't think there's anything like that.
There's no program for that.
No, it's only farmland or, or managed forest. Yeah. And in fact, some people who own beautiful wetlands would think that that's as valuable as anything, looking out, watching the birds land and, and everything else. So it's, it might change in a real estate market value, but, but not in, in any kind of program or reduction in taxes. Can I turn to?
I'm just, I'm not sure if that's fair, but I wanted to understand the concept because
Sure.
it's, you know, and I, and I guess just a perspective, I do think that we need to establish some plan of action here in terms of how long we're going to wait for the county or if the county's not going to do something. You know, what should we as a, as a local municipality do to ensure that we don't have a repeat of, you know, this kind of situation?
So it's at the county, gosh, is it, what's the date, Deputy Mayor Kennedy, March 9th?
March 9th, yeah.
March 9th in the afternoon. You, go ahead. You take the floor.
Yeah, a couple of things. When you're buying properties of wetland on the swamp, when you're buying it and it's significant, beautiful wetlands, when you're selling the property, just as a rule of thumb, that's what you do. I wish that there were some programs of property that I own with 108 acres, probably had 65 or 70 acres of significant, you know, wetlands. I think there's a couple of things here that we need to also remember is the LIDAR project that the county's undertaken, plus the work that the land trust is doing with Paul Heaven of delineating and actually delineating the actual wetland is going to be an important tool moving forward to help with just these kinds of things. And also we need as a, as a municipality and as a county to write letters to the M and RF or whatever they call themselves now, to complete the water course review for the rest of Halliburton County that was done. And if you look at the maps, Halles East has been brought up to speed, but nothing west of that. I've said that before. That's a very important tool as we move forward, not only on this initiative, but also on the shoreline. So anyways, that's, that's basically all I wanted to say on that. Thanks.
No, good, really good points there. Okay. So thanks for this report, Jeff, and, and getting it back to us so quickly. So I do need a mover in a second or two to receive. Councillor Wood Roberts and councillor Clark. It resulted the committee received a report regarding the role of other government ministries and agencies in regard to protection of significant natural heritage features, wetlands and endangered or threatened species for information purposes. All in favor? And that's carried. And lastly, I'll just look to see if there's any notice of motion. So that concludes our meeting for today. Just a reminder, we do meet for our budget meeting. Not sure when the agenda will go out for that, but that is this Friday at nine o'clock. And I'm not anticipating that that should take too, too long. That'll be our third draft. So I think we're just finalizing those points that were made at the, at the second draft and, and we'll see where we land. So I'll just look for a mover in a second or two adjourned. Deputy Mayor Kennedy and councillor Donaldson. It resulted that the committee of the whole adjournments meeting held on February 8th, 2022 at 11:35 AM. All in favor? Great. Okay, that's carried. So thanks, everybody. Have a great rest of your afternoon and we'll see you back on screen on Friday. Bye now.